I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for March 8th, 2021. In just a moment, you will see the flag come on the screen. When you do, if you would please rise as you are able and join us with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Councilmember Hoppy.
Present.
Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Present.
Councilmember Haltine.
Present.
Councilmember Weaver.
Here.
Councilmember Stites.
Present.
Councilmember Dozeman.
Here.
Councilmember Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'm really honored tonight to read a proclamation in support of Women's History Month and International Women's Day, and I'm going to ask our mayor pro tem to step up after I finish reading this and accept the proclamation and say a few words. So, whereas Women's History Month is declared annually as a month that highlights the contributions of women throughout history and in contemporary society, and whereas March 8th has been recognized across the world as International Women's Day since 1911, and whereas in March 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring Women's History Week to align with International Women's Day to commemorate the accomplishments, perspectives, and experiences of women in the United States, and whereas since 1995, each U.S. president has declared March as Women's History Month, and whereas in November 1893, a Colorado referendum passed women's suffrage into law, making it the second state in the country to give women the right to vote, and whereas in 1920, the suffrage movement had finally gained enough support, and Congress, grateful for women's help during the war, passed the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which prohibits the states and the federal government from denying the right to vote to citizens of the United States on the basis of sex. And whereas while the right to vote is a common topic of study when examining women's history, there are many, many more issues, perspectives, and accomplishments that require investigation across history, literature, science, politics, and the arts to more fully appreciate and understand the significant contributions of women throughout history. And whereas women who are residents, business owners, employees, elected officials, members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department personnel, and city staff, and make a difference every day in the city of Wheat Ridge are to be celebrated for their contributions, now therefore be it resolved that the Wheat Ridge mayor and city council formally celebrate the month of March 2021 as Women's History Month and March 8th, 2021, as International Women's Day in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, and witness her of on this eighth day of March 2021, Bud Starker, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am very thankful that you asked for me to accept this proclamation. On behalf of my fellow councilwomen, our city staff, our uniformed officers, and women everywhere in our great community, I'm honored to accept this proclamation. I'm also humbled by the privilege to raise four daughters at this time in history where glass ceilings are being broken and the contributions of women are being recognized and celebrated so exuberantly. Just like to say, girls and women of all ages and all walks of life, thank you for everything that you contribute to our lives and keep moving forward.
Thank you very much. Those are inspiring words, and I hope there are a number of young women in our viewing audience today who will take them to heart and really become part of, I know, our council and our city government benefits by having the great voices of the women that we have. So, thank you all for serving. Okay, we will go to approval of the minutes. Counselors, in your packets, you have the city council minutes for February 22nd, 2020, and the study session notes of March 1st, 2021. Actually, those should probably be both 2021, you have a little typo. Are there any corrections to be noted to these minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will let those stand as presented. Unless I hear objection, we will let the agenda stand as presented, so ordered. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under citizens' right to speak. We will bring you into our meeting format under the Zoom format, or if you're on the telephone, we will bring you in on the telephone. We have a special study session directly after the city council meeting, and in accordance with our rules, we will take comment on the study session item, which, let me see, I will read the title of that if I can quickly get there in my book, which is Planning, A Discussion on Planning to Return to In-Person Council Meetings. So, if you would like to speak on that, this is the opportunity to speak on that. We will not take comment later in our meeting. So, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak now, this is your opportunity. If you would like to raise your hand in the Zoom format, our technician, Ms. Scheck, will bring you into the meeting. Is there anyone wishing, so raise your hand if you want to speak during tonight's citizens' right to speak.
I don't see anyone with their hand up, Mayor, and I've unmuted a phone caller, just in case.
Okay. If you would like to speak under citizens' right to speak, now is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format. If you're on the telephone, please unmute yourself and ask to be recognized, and we will bring you into the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight? I'll give it a few more seconds. Okay, we will conclude then, our citizens' right to speak, and move to our consent agenda. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce the consent agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our consent agenda tonight has three items. One A is a motion to approve the purchase and payment of 2021 vehicle replacements and the purchase and payment for installation of lighting and auxiliary equipment in the total amount not to exceed $479,235. Consent agenda item number 1B is a motion to amend to the Bayou Ditch contract to approve additional costs exceeding contract and contingency in the amount of $13,250.59 and approve a revised contingency of $11,749.41. The third item on the consent agenda, 1C, is Resolution Number 13-2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $62,000 for the purchase and payment of a police department vehicle.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items 1A, 1B, and 1C?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items number 1A, 1B, and 1C.
If you would like to second this, please raise your hand. I guess I got just two men raising their hands tonight. Mr. Stites, you're the second on this one. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Will the clerk please record the votes?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 12-2021, a resolution approving a waiver of the liquor occupation tax for calendar year 2021 for certain eligible businesses within the city. At issue, to help local businesses weather the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, city council requested that the city clerk's office develop a program to waive and/or refund revenues due to the city through liquor occupation tax laws.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We have, well, Mr. Kirkpatrick, our city clerk, helped draft this, and Ally Scheck also, so I'm not sure who's going to start.
I would defer to our esteemed Director of Administration.
Okay.
We don't really have much to add, honestly, to the information that's here. This was, you all provided consenses for us to move forward with this program because this program actually waives or refunds taxes due to the city. It does require a resolution. This is not a deferment, it's a waiver or a refund for the 2021 calendar year liquor occupational tax. We talked about this at length at the last study session, and staff now just need your official action, and then, I believe, our deputy city clerk and the finance team are ready to put this into motion and get the application out to the businesses that qualify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we open this up to questions from council, I will open this to the public for questions or comments on this item. This is agenda item number two. If you would like to speak on this, you're a member of the public, now is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, we will bring you into the meeting. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone with their hand raised?
We don't, Mayor, and again, I've unmuted the phone caller.
Okay, so if you were wishing to speak on this agenda item number two, now is your opportunity. Please raise your hand in the Zoom format or unmute yourself on the telephone, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Give you just a couple more seconds here to see if we have anyone that wants to speak on this item. Okay, we will close our citizens' right to speak on agenda item number two and take any questions that may be from council on this item. Okay, seeing none, Ms. Dozeman, a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 12-2021, a resolution approving a waiver of the liquor occupation tax for calendar year 2021 for certain eligible businesses within the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put it out there that this is something that the businesses need to apply for, and the easy application for it will be on the city website, and in the memo, they were asking for that to be done by April 30th, so we have like six weeks, and to, you know, really get the word out there, too. We have about 42 businesses that could apply for it. So, I just wanted to have that on record that if anybody's watching, let your local on-premise, that most restaurants on-premise know that they should go to the city website so that they can apply for this waiver.
Thank you. Any more discussion on the motion? Or discussion before we get, were we on, yeah, we're on the motion. Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please poll the council?
I do not see Ms. Hoppy. Oh, there she is. I meant Ms. Haltine, there she is, she's in the dark, in her vehicle. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed eight to nothing with one member moving in a car.
Okay, thank you very much. She may be, you know, she may be not too visible, but I'm sure she's not in the dark. So, that concludes our regular agenda items on tonight's business meeting. We will go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much this evening, but just a heads up for council and the public that Jefferson County, as you remember, has moved to blue on the COVID dial. Unfortunately, our metrics, though, COVID metrics have been in yellow for the last couple weeks, so the state health department has not officially moved us back to yellow, but I think it's just a good call out there for everybody to remain vigilant. Numbers are creeping up again a little bit, but we want to keep the restrictions down as much as possible, so just keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Go to city attorneys' matters. Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will go to elected officials' matters and start with, let's start with our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Well, then, one person has suggested I change my last name. I just want to thank you for passing this resolution to alleviate the liquor occupation tax, but mostly I want to thank Robin Eaton, Ally Scheck, and several people in the finance department, in addition to Mark Colvin, for the work they've done on this, and I'm sure that there were several attorneys who had to craft language, and I appreciate that as well. Otherwise, be safe.
Thank you, thank you, Clerk Kirkpatrick. We have our treasurer, Treasurer Miller, with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I don't have anything to share with the group tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Good to meet you, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to tell all of my fellow lady leaders, Happy International Women's Day, and I especially appreciate the National League of Cities Conference taking it virtual this year. I know Councilmember Haltine and I had tuned in today, and it's been pretty interesting, a lot of COVID updates, some really good workshops about recovering and rebuilding after COVID-19. So, it's been, you know, a wonderful day. I've learned a lot, very informative, and I wanted to give an update on the Carnation Festival, as I have just come from a meeting, and we are moving forward in hopes that we will be able to have a festival come August to celebrate our city's incorporation, so might be a scaled-down version, you know, than we're accustomed to, but we are forging ahead, and we are really optimistic about celebrating Wheat Ridge in August, so.
Thank you. Thank you for both of those reports. Good news there. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, nothing tonight, just remind everybody to shop local, and if you can find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you so much. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Dozeman, for that wonderful announcement. I'm super excited, and my one request is that we get the kiss look-alike band back, please. Thanks.
They did a great job. Thank you. Ms. Haltine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am no longer driving, I am seated at my house now, thank you. I had to take my son to scouts tonight, so my only announcement is that on March 24th, which is Wednesday, I am hosting a District 2 meeting to discuss the upcoming Wadsworth project. I had a great meeting today with Director John Stone and Public Works Department to talk about what are the important topics that we need to discuss, so I invite everybody, it'll be a Zoom meeting, and that link will hopefully be on the city calendar here in the next few days. We'll go over just sort of, you know, how we got to this point with the project, what's next, what to expect, and what some of the concerns are for our districts. So, I invite District 2 residents and businesses to please join me on March 24th, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Urban.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the fastest meeting in the West. I do want to congratulate all the people who contributed to the mayor's newsletter. That was the most informative newsletter I have ever read, and I have participated with Garden in a Box. I know it's been around in different cities before, and now that it is available in Wheat Ridge is huge, so that is really a good thing. And also coming up on Sunday is daylight savings time. Spring forward, get ready. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much. Ms. Hoppy.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to announce that this Saturday, the second Saturday of the month, and I have coffee with the mayor at nine o'clock. If you would like to tune in, we'd love to have you for an hour of conversation and getting to know more about our city, what's going on, and we've got a special guest joining us, and I will keep that as a little teaser for closer to the event. So, and my only other announcement is that we're making great strides, as you've seen in the press, on defeating the virus. Hopefully, everyone is being able to get into line, to get their vaccinations. It's still, the health officials are still cautioning us to be safe with our personal cleanliness, washing our hands, using a mask, and social distancing, and I hope we can hang on to this a little bit later. We've got great things coming up in the city, great report from Ms. Dozeman, and a good teaser on the Carnation Festival coming, and I know I speak for a lot of people saying that it's going to be great to see the warmer weather, spring and summer coming, and being able to gather together. So, if there's no more business to come before this council meeting, we will adjourn this meeting, and then we will open up our study session. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and let me ask anyone on council, does anyone feel necessary to take a little break now, or can we just move right forward into our study session? Okay, great, let's find that tab in my notebook and go to the study session, and we have only one action item, is a plan for returning to in-person council meetings. We have a briefing on this, prepared by Ms. Scheck, and I don't, I'm going to, Mr. Goff, will Ms. Scheck be giving this presentation, or?
Yeah, I think we'll both jump in. I'll start a little bit and turn it over to her, but yeah, there was a request by city council to bring this forward and start having a discussion about what it looks like to potentially come back in person for council meetings. I did reach out, had a discussion with my city manager peers in the local area, and a few, a couple cities are starting to have the same conversation, and Westminster has put a plan together, they're looking at a multi-phase plan, they're shooting for an April 12th date to come back, but it will just be city council and the city manager and city attorney, they're going to allow staff to still virtually call in and not allow, not invite public in, at least during the first phase. They're potentially looking for a second phase, maybe to start later in June, where they would start allowing some public to come to meetings. So, they're kind of looking at a cautious approach. Lakewood really hasn't had many discussions yet about council coming back, they're starting to open their PD a little bit more to the public, but still haven't had any discussions about coming back virtually for city council. Irvine, I think you may know, has been meeting in a hybrid approach since last June, but one of their council members does, still calls in through Zoom, and they had to take a break in February because of, I think, some potential exposures that they had, but I think they're starting again here in March to meet in a hybrid approach. They do allow some public to come in, still maintaining that, that's a limit of the number of people in a room. Golden is pretty adamant to continue virtual for quite some time, I believe, they haven't had any discussions. So, it's kind of all over the board a little bit, but I think people are starting to discuss it, and Ally and I have discussed it, she's been working on hybrid approaches, and for months, honestly, so that we weren't too surprised, and have some different options for you to present this evening, and I will turn it over to her.
Do you, city manager, I'm just going to share my screen. Can everybody see that PowerPoint okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, I'm here this evening, Allison Scheck, Administrative Services Director, here at the city of Wheat Ridge, and happy to support you all in this conversation, as you start to talk about what coming back to chambers could look like for you all. So, just a little bit of background, you last met in chambers on Friday, the 13th, 2020. Can you believe that? If you recall, it was, you all came together, we created a sort of funky study session almost set up near the front, because we were doing, we had a couple of people on conference call, and that's when you all met in an emergency meeting to cancel upcoming meetings until we could figure out what was going on. We then moved virtual, and you held 38 virtual meetings on Zoom in 2020, and this is the eighth this year. So, congratulations, you've all been very, very productive in this new, in this new format. We invited the public to start coming into city council chambers to provide public comment for both council meetings and planning commission meetings, starting on Monday, June 15th of 2020. So, since that time, members of the public have been able to RSVP to come down to chambers, and that has sort of been our initial test, if you like, of what a hybrid could look like. And my, and our understanding is you're ready to sort of start talking about what might a return to chambers look like. The current health orders, as of today, we are operating under the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Seventh Amendment Public Health Order 20-36. It actually expires March 14th. This one's been going, that's the Safer at Home, it's, oh, sorry, the COVID-19 dial that continues to be extended currently every 30 days, but it's currently due to expire on March 14th of 2021. And here are just a handful of salient points of that public health order. It says that individuals at risk of severe illness should stay home and cannot be compelled to work. Critical government functions may continue to operate and must comply with distancing requirements, and specifically, a municipal governing body is considered a critical government function under that health order, it's defined that way. Face coverings are required pursuant to, this says Executive Order 2020-138, and it was just updated on March 5th. It now expires on April 4th, 2021, and that's Executive Order D-2021-056. So, that's the face covering order that continues to be extended every 30 days. And this, the Seventh Amendment Public Health Order also says that disease prevention measures must be put into place, and so we're doing that currently at work, right? Disease prevention measures include requiring masks, social distancing, we do symptom checkers for all our employees, so every time a city employee shows up at work, they have to fill out a form that gets emailed to their supervisor attesting to the fact that they don't have any symptoms. So, that's something that we've been doing since, gosh, April or May of last year, whenever this first came about. Our current state, which I would say is an option, obviously, to continue, our current state, meetings are held via Zoom, they're streamed on Channel 8 and YouTube Live. As I've described, members of the public may RSVP to attend in person and speak from the podium, and you've seen that happen, and members of the public can provide public comment on Zoom or on Wheat Ridge Speaks until noon the day of the meeting, so they can zoom into the meeting, just like we're used to, and as just as a reminder, they can continue to go onto Wheat Ridge Speaks and provide written public comment until noon the day of the meeting. So, that's the current state, and I would sort of listed that as. until noon the day of the meeting. So that's the current state and I would sort of listed that as option one in your memo to continue that. Um, hybrid option. So, you know, when we talk about, um, the public health order requiring distancing, and then putting into place, um, good, good hygiene and social distancing practices. Unfortunately, our dais doesn't allow for that right now. You don't have six feet of distance in between each of the seats, as you may see in some other cities that are starting to come back and further out in the metro area. And so one idea for a hybrid meeting, if, if being at the dais were to be important to you, would be that four of you come in person and sit at every other seat on the dais. Now, back at the beginning of all this, we did go ahead and order little Plexiglas, um, partitions in between, in between each seat. And those are there. Um, and we did that because we really didn't know if there was gonna be a shortage or not. And we didn't want to be, you know, sort of caught without, in the event that anyone did wanna start coming back. So those are there, they're installed, um, but it really doesn't give you a lot of room. You can, if you remember how close you all used to be, um, a year ago. Um, so, but that's one option is that four members of council attend in person, sitting at every other position. Um, again, the Plexi petitions are in, um, the remaining counselors could participate via Zoom. Uh, the city clerk could certainly participate in his usual spot. Um, staff could attend virtually or in person and members of the public could, um, RSVP to attend in person or participate virtually. So that's an option where some of you are in, some of you are at home. We would use the sort of typical council setup in that environment and, uh, Zoom would be, um, would continue to play a pivotal role in the meetings. And then finally, an option to consider, um, should all elective officials wish to be back in person and maintain the social distancing that the public health order requires. And that is to utilize an expanded version of your typical study session setup. So think back to the Recreation Center where we were, uh, together on February 20th in a, in the retreat format. Of course, that was more of a U than a rectangle. It wasn't closed at the top. But the thought here is we could actually fit 12 six-foot tables in a rectangle. Each member, so nine of you, uh, the city manager, the city clerk and a spot for a staff presenter or a guest. Um, could each have your own six-foot spot at the square. I would, uh, say the city clerk could certainly still attend from the usual city clerk's position. Um, what we would do, what we'd recommend is that we pull the petition from council into courts and we would ask the public to sit on, on the court side. We'd set up AV so that they can see what's going on in chambers. And, um, that, that is certainly an, an option. We would still, uh, recommend that the meeting also be held via Zoom so that staff that aren't comfortable coming in or members of the public that aren't comfortable coming in could still participate as necessary and as desired, um, from the safety of their homes. Um, and so this is not a great photo, but I managed to snag one. We did kind of set it up, um, a little bit. So if you can see, this is the, I don't know if you can see my mouse wiggling about in this. Okay, good. Um, that's the partition. So under the plates, we pulled that back. So here's an example of, you know, there's a chair at a six-foot table. Here's a mic. There's not quite enough mics for every single position. There'd have to be some sharing. We do have some handholds, the, um, handheld mics that can come in. Um, we would obviously turn chairs facing this way. Um, but that's, you know, that's an option. I just wanted to show a little bit of what we could do. So, um, just some additional considerations and then I'll turn it over to you all to discuss. Uh, staff, we, we do recommend that we continue using Zoom, um, for the public or elected officials or staff that are, again, at severe risk of illness or perhaps feel unwell and think it would be best to, to stay away and still participate. The chambers and court capacity is currently 250 as posted. I would recommend that we, if we, if we do this option, this third option, um, that we initially limit, um, capacity to 50. And, you know, total i- in the room and sort of see how that goes. Start there. We would wanna implement symptom check protocols for elected officials and staff. Um, currently when Denise takes RSVPs, she goes through a symptom check form with those that are RSVPing. We don't actually take the temperature on site, um, but we have them sort of sign off on the fact that they're healthy enough to, to come in. Um, timing wise for you all, there's no critical timing issues. These systems have been tested. Um, there aren't any pending or published public hearings. We definitely want a little bit of time just to really go through, you know, tonight, I'll say, we're sort of looking for general direction from you all. And then we will work on the procedural details, but one of those things that we'll wanna do is make sure that we're running anything through the filter of the current public health order, which again is due to expire, anticipated to be renewed, but could be renewed with some changes, right? So we want a little bit of time to just dig into that and make sure that we're, we're, we're complying, that we're complying with that. Um, so again, we'd just like some general direction from you, um, and then we'll, staff will go back and work on the fine details and all of the, um, procedural, um, pieces that go with, with, with your general direction. Um, we're here to support you in this conversation and I'll turn it back to the city manager. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Allison. That was great. Um, we'll turn it over to council for questions and discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we'll start with questions and start with Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Ally and Patrick, and everyone who helped with this to, to think through all these options. Um, obviously you all have thought about it a lot more than, than we have, I think, um, cause th- those seem like really, really awesome options. Um, I have a, a quick question about if regardless of whether we come back hybrid or in person, how much time do you think it will take? Uh, you know, cause I'm, I'm thinking about a meeting, but I'm also thinking that it's probably going to be time ahead of time as well to, before a meeting starts. Do, what do you anticipate? It's sort of really starting, you know, like, would I have to be in chambers by six if the meeting was starting by seven, just to sort of get all this stuff organized? Or do you, do you anticipate it sort of changing the time amount for either participants or for elected officials or?
I wouldn't think so. Um, Ally, any thoughts on that?
No, I think if, if what you're describing, you know, in general, no. I think if you recall, again, close to a year ago, we, we worked on, we did some trainings ahead of time with you all. We did two different, two separate sessions. Um, depending on how much things change, again, based on your direction, we might wanna do that. Have folks come in and sort of practice the setup and see how you feel about it. Um, again, it's, it's really, tonight, let's get your general sort of what you're thinking and then, um, we'll go through how to, how to prepare you. Um, and, you know, so that it's not a big shock and require, I think, a lot of time ahead of a meeting. Um, but in general, no. In general, I think the goal would be, uh, very much back to the way you were if you're coming in.
And it hasn't been sort of, uh, an, uh, an increased burden on you all to, to sort of do the health checks and things before people are in chambers, those that have been in chambers. Uh, cause I know you've been in there sometimes and I just, you know, trying to sort of picture what, how it was with moving around the room and all those things, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Denise Sosa, like I said, she's doing RSVPs with a time, uh, the deadline is noon the day of the meeting. And that way she has the opportunity to have a quick conversation with everyone to make sure that they're, um, she talks through the health screening with them. Um, so that's been great. And then reminds them, please show up in a mask. And we have extras when they come in the door and we often, we have a police officer as well that says, hey, welcome, you know, please make sure you keep your mask on. Um, the third option I described, we would have, you talked about moving around the room. So one idea is that we actually have the public enter and exit through that court door to try and just sort of keep folks, um, a lot separate. So again, I don't think time constraint wise, um, I, I don't see much of an addition here.
Thank you. I just was curious how it was going.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Hoppy, Counselor Nosler Beck after that, and then, uh, Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, thank you, Ally, for putting all of this together. Um, I just wanna say that I, I support the, kind of the third option of doing kind of study session, um, setup with the courtroom open. But what I want to be really sure about, that we get through in this conversation is I wanna make sure that everybody, that all of our members feel like they can do their work in a safe environment. And so, um, so I just wanna make sure that, um, that people are communicate, that as council members, we are communicating how, if we feel that this would be safe or not safe for them personally. And then, um, and I just wanna make sure too that, uh, if someone feels like they don't, they wouldn't feel safe, that, um, that is their business and, um, it's not for any of us to try to talk anyone out of that. So, um, I just kinda wanted to lay that out there. I, and I, and I, I like the, the prospect of us being able to be in the room again together as long as everybody feels safe.
Thank you. I have, uh, Counselor Nosler Beck and then Counselor, uh, Hulteen.
Thanks. Um, and this, this kind of piggybacks on what you were saying, Councilmember Hoppy. Um, my, my concern, um, just as a, a person who's waiting for their vaccine, um, and I'm not willing to, to jump in line to, to go ahead or, or anything. Um, I'm not comfortable, um, meeting before I have a vaccine. And that's, um, that's my own choice and I'm, I'm choosing to share that very personal information with everybody right now. Um, and there are people who may not want a vaccine. Um, and that's entirely their choice. And this is, this is all medical issues that we're now talking about in really public forums. And so I, I'm jumping on exactly what you were just saying, Janice, but, um, you know, I think an important thing to consider when we're talking about all of this is the timing of when vaccine allotments will, will be set. And, um, I think that those are good parameters for, once vaccines are available for everyone, then we don't have to nitpick between if the, I have a vaccine or not. Nobody needs to know. People have just decided to show up, whether they're coming to speak on an issue that's important to them or as, um, as a, a city counselor. And the one, the one thing that I would say is that, um, amongst all the options, like, thanks for laying these out, Ally. This was so great. And the memo was really good too, like, um, is that I do think that there is an advantage to having, like, if you're, if there's some meeting in, in the space and some aren't meeting in, in the space, um, there's, there's different ways that you interact with people. And you, you, um, you have a better chance at, um, having an even playing field if, um, you're all participating in the same way. So those are just some things I'd like to throw out there. Um, thank you so much for this and I, I really enjoy serving on this council with all of you because I feel, um, like we're considering all the components in this really complex issue. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. I have Counselor Hulteen, Treasurer Miller and Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Starker. Um, uh, and thank you, staff, for bringing forward, uh, you know, you always, uh, not just bring good solutions, but have really thought through them and I appreciate that a lot. Uh, to, to kind of echo some thoughts previously stated, um, I, well, so first of all, I'm, I'm hearing from my constituents. They want us to be back in the room together. There's something about being in, in chambers together where it's a relational, um, civic field where we can exchange information and hear each other. And so I appreciate that a lot. I personally am very anxious to get back, uh, on the dais and in the room together because I feel like to me, that's what makes Wheat Ridge a community that I enjoy serving, is that I think we're relational before, before anything else. Um, that having been said, I really recognize what, um, to Ms. Nosler Beck's comments that, you know, we really shouldn't do that until we're, we're at a point where we're all safe and, and feel comfortable doing that. Um, I appreciate the hybrid solution that, the option two that was presented. To me, that doesn't feel like a viable option. I think we're, we're more cohesive together on Zoom. Um, so, so I would, if it were up to me, I would just take that option off the table. I'd rather we're all on Zoom or all in the room together. Um, and, and I agree, I think maybe this conversation isn't necessarily about setting a firm date, but maybe acknowledging or setting forth the parameters and indicators where we feel like, once we reach this point of either like, you know, vaccination amongst ourselves or vaccination at the public at large or a level on the dial, that that's the indicator that at that point, we're ready to get back in the room together. Um, and because that third option continues to include opportunities for people to engage in our meetings, either, uh, amongst us as peers or as our citizens that we value hearing from, um, that they don't have to be in person, that we would be able to accommodate people who, who aren't comfortable. So, um, I'm, I'm anxious to get back in the room. I feel like, once everyone on council is eligible for a vaccine, that's a, that's a parameter that's important to me, that, um, we should all, uh, as Ms. Nosler Beck said, uh, we're not mandating vaccines, but we should all be eligible for a vaccine as, as elected officials. Um, and maybe identifying either that we're at blue or green or a certain percentage of eligible adults in our county have been vaccinated as an indicator of a, a safe sort of social environment for us. So, um, I, tonight, I'm very grateful that I didn't have to be in the dais because I was able to take my son to scouts, but, um, so with that having been said, I, I am happy with option one right now. And I'm looking forward to option three and I'm not very interested in option two. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Treasurer Miller, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Hoppy and, uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Dozeman. So, uh, Treasurer Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really appreciate, um, all the options and work that staff has put into this. I think they got some great options and I support everyone's sentiments and their feelings. It's definitely a very personal question, uh, um, thing to, to be able to respond to and, and that decision belongs to everyone. Um, a couple of things that I'd also like to point out that has happened since we last met, that we've had seen nationwide social justice protests, a very contentious national election, a violent insurrection at the US Capitol where several people had died and just general discord, um, in a lot of places. Um, I'm just curious of how security in, uh, council chambers may change, uh, in the future. I know that we've had a police officer there. Um, you don't have to go through the metal detector. Um, I, I'm just curious if, if it's time to start thinking about that, um, increased security in council chambers and what that means for safety above and beyond just the public health issues.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Goff. Did you have any, uh, any thoughts on that?
You know, I don't know if we've, we've considered, um, that's too much on, for this discussion, but, um, that's definitely something we would, um, like to hear from council if, if they feel, if you feel that, um, we should, um, increase security and, uh, as, as Chris, as such, City Treasurer mentioned, there is the option for a magnetometer, if that's something you want, um, if you want to implement. Um, and, uh, yeah, we, we always try to have at least one officer, um, in the room. Um, there's, there's other, you know, we have, we, we have had some safety protocols put in place for quite some time, which maybe we need to, um, revisit with you all on, on, um, exits of, uh, safety exits out of the chambers for city council, especially there's, there's, there's ways to do that. Um, but there, there are other things we can do and so that's something we can talk about. Um, maybe, maybe it's a different, um, study session topic so we can be prepared. Um, if that's, if that's what council chooses. And, um, why, why I have the mic, Mayor, if it's okay, um, I do want to mention, I was gonna send an email out tomorrow to the city council. Um, but last week, the state of Colorado did update their vaccine, um, priority list and once we get to 1B4, which is on the list, um, which they hope starts around March 21st, so very soon. Um, that will include, um, uh, the continuity of local government. So that definitely should include elected officials and, and we're hoping it includes all local official, local employees. Um, it's, it's taken a while to get that direction from the state. They, they included state level for quite some time. And, uh, which is frustrating because, um, honestly, I, you know, not, 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 no disrespect for state level employees, but, um, or officials, but, um, I think local government officials, um, have even direct, more direct access or, or exposure sometimes to the public. So I think we, we should have, um, we should be, we should have been, um, higher on the list. So, um, vaccines should be, um, you all should be eligible by March, around March 21st, you know. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I have Ms. Hoppy and then Ms. Dozeman on the list.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Nosler Beck and Hulteen, uh, brought up something that I had, um, neglected to mention also, which is that I do feel like, and, and I have said this in our discussions in the past. which is that I do feel like, and and I have said this in our discussions in the past, too, that I feel like it should be, uh, an all, one way or the other. So an all or nothing, we're all Zoom or we're all in person. Um, again, I respect everybody's, um, opinions on where they, how they feel safe. And I want to make sure that all of us, um, can get our work done and feel safe at the same time.
Uh, thank you. And Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so I I completely understand the sentiment of all, uh, like an all or nothing or as far as meeting in person. And while I find, um, Zoom meetings to be very convenient, you know, I'm I'm home. Um, you know, with my water bottle in my kitchen, I don't have to commute anywhere. Um, I I completely understand the convenience of Zoom, but I I really do want to get back to in person and and whatever parameters that may be. Um, I, you know, uh, unlike others, um, am fully vaccinated because I work directly with providers at the hospital. Um, and I know that it's going to take some time to get everybody vaccinated. Um, you know, so my my preference would be in person, uh, whether that's hybrid or full in person. But I don't want to impose that on any other council members that maybe not be comfortable with meeting in person just yet. So, um, however that may look, you know, I'll defer to others and just kind of put my preference out there.
Thank you. Um, additional discussion? I don't have anyone down on my list. So, uh, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know a little bit about infection control. Um, the thing about getting the vaccines is, uh, you still, after the second vaccine, it's two weeks after that before you get some type of an immunity. So if you get the Pfizer, um, you get the second vaccine in 21 days. Moderna is, um, a month after that, and then add another couple of weeks. Okay? Um, about the retreat, yes, I went to the retreat. That was the first time in a year that I had been to a meeting of that sort with those many people. And, um, I will state, at least one person, when they were speaking, removed their mask. And, um, it was very difficult to hear with the mask on. And then at first, the doors were open, and then they got closed, and then they kind of opened again. Um, that was just my observation of what was going on. And then last Thursday, in the Denver Post on the front page, I don't know if anybody saw that, about the City Council of Littleton, um, had a picture of their council meeting. And there were eight people in the chambers, six people were not wearing masks. So they were not, it appeared to be six feet apart. They had glass partitions. There were two men in the chambers where their heads were over the glass partitions. So that kind of doesn't seem to work very well. So I think of safety, and it's not just for myself, it's for everybody else out there. Um, it is still recommended to wear the masks. And so if we go into chambers and we're wearing the masks, that's kind of like, people can't see you talking. And that is kind of a sensory deprivation type of a thing. And so I think what we're doing right now, we, we're doing well with the cases kind of going down, but that changes every day. We have spring break that's coming up, and we just saw what happened in Boulder. So we're not sure what else going to be going on. We're all safe right now. People can still go into City Hall and speak if they want to do that. They can call into our meetings. But at the time, you know, we stay safe, other people stay safe. And even CDC is recommending that even though you get the vaccine, still wear the mask because you're showing people what it, what to do. And, um, it's about not just ourselves being safe, but it's keeping other people safe, too. So I'm fine with what we're doing right now because we don't know still what's going on. There's activity that's still going to go on. So that's just my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item. Uh, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, I think that I would prefer option number three o- over all the other options. And, uh, in some ways, I like the hybrid option because it relieves the pressure from those that may not want to attend in person, the option to participate, uh, virtually. But I also agree with the, uh, a concept that we should all be on the same playing field, as it were. So, um, but I also like having sort of a set, a parameter around when we'd come back in person. And I I like, uh, the option of saying that, once we've all reached the eligibility point of receiving the vaccine and our county is at a green level, that, to me, seems like appropriate timeframe to then come back in person, their option three, all wearing masks, all being socially distant. Uh, but still coming back in person, which I think is a good step, both for us as a, as a working body and and for the community, showing that things are getting back to normal. So I would choose option three with, uh, the county being in green and each of us being eligible for a vaccine.
Thank you. And I have Mr. Stites and then Ms. Weaver.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And, you know, I agree with many of the sentiments, uh, expressed earlier. You know, I I do believe that, um, while the hybrid option seems like a great idea and it would be best of all worlds, I do think that we do need to be all on the same playing field. So, um, I would like to see either option one or option three. Um, and I think that Mr. Urban, uh, probably was reading my mind as as he was talking there. But, um, I think that getting to that green level, um, for the general public, because even though we can get a vaccine, we're wanting to have the general public come in and and visit with us. So, um, so I think getting to that green level and, um, you know, if if it's everybody here on council being eligible, maybe, uh, plus a month because if you do get the Moderna, it does take a month. So just because you're eligible, we can't go into like that week. It's going to take at least a month. So, um, but I think it's probably going to take at least that, um, to get to that green level anyway. So, um, I would like to see us in that level green before we, before we move forward to that. But, uh, I would like to kind of, if we can maybe check off, it sounds like most everybody kind of said that, but if we can kind of check off option two and then just stay one and then go to three at some point, maybe find the parameters for that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. Weaver.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to, I agree with the last two speakers and, um, what Mr. Stites said. I I appreciate that we're in green. And, um, and I would prefer either option one or option three. And and of course, that, uh, we are eligible plus time to to, uh, gain, uh, immunity or whatever, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, additional discussion? Um, Ms. Hoppy?
I just kind of wanted, I've been taking notes, and so I just kind of wanted to, um, put out there what I heard kind of a majority of. And I heard a majority on option one or three. I heard a majority on, um, all or nothing. And, um, and then, uh, Councilmember Urban's suggestion, I only heard, only two other people spoke after him, but, um, eligibility, um, plus time for immunity and being in green, um, being our benchmarks of when we would be able to, um, come back into chambers. And, um, so I guess I would just ask if, um, some other people could kind of weigh in on Councilmember Urban's, um, suggestion and and which I, which I think is a good suggestion. And so thank you for that, Councilmember Urban.
Uh, thank you. I have, uh, Ms. Holtein and Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I agree. Ms. Hoppy, I think, um, those benchmarks sound good to me that there's an eligibility and then we're in that specific dial on the county. But I think one of the things we have to say then is, once we've reached that, is it 30 days after that point? Because as we learned last year, there's a significant period of time from when we're shifting our meetings in terms of notifications for our public hearings. So, um, I think we, I I'm in agreement with the benchmarks you just put forward. But I think the second part of that is, once we meet that ben- benchmark, what is the appropriate notification time to then say we are going to this, um, in-person meeting so that we're not caught in the loops that we got caught in last year where we were in this, are we virtual or are we in person? So I just want to make sure we're really tight on that. And and maybe we don't have to nail that down exactly tonight, but I don't want us, I mean, I I think those benchmarks are good, but we want to make sure, once we reach that benchmark, how much time do we need to give proper notifications so all those things kind of run through their proper cycles?
Thank you. I have, uh, Ms. Nosler Beck and then, uh, I believe Ms. Hoppy.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I agree with that. Those specific bench- benchmarks will be, um, would be great. Um, the, the one thing I wanted to mention was that I think we've come a really long way through the last year in terms of different ways for the public to access our meetings. Um, and I like the idea of also exploring on the other side of this, like still having accessibility to our meetings through Zoom. Um, because we have seen good participation with people being able to use this as a, as a way to, um, you know, participate. Um, so I, I, I know that's kind of down the road, and it'll probably naturally happen um, as we're offering safe options for the public, um, to participate. But I just want to make sure that we keep that on our list of things to try and keep as part of what we're doing. Um, and I also, um, appreciated all of the recommendations that Councilmember Urban recommended in terms of things that we should hit in terms of green. And, um, what was the other thing you said? I agree with Councilmember Urban.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hop.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilmember Urban, a couple of meetings ago, uh, posed the question about the public notices and the and the verbiage to, um, to Mr. Dahl. And, um, Mr. Dahl, maybe you can, um, remind us of what you said. But I believe it was if we keep Zoom, then we are, we are still within our, we are still within our verbiage of the public hearing that's happening and how.
That's right. I gave a little thought to that in anticipation of tonight's meeting. And, you know, we're already, uh, giving notice for both, you know, for both forms, when you think about it, because people are are permitted to come to the council chambers at date, time, and place. That's no different than saying council will be there at date, time, and place. But you can also participate virtually, uh, using the following mechanisms, one, two, three. So when you think about it, we already are noticing the full range of ways to participate. And as you shift to being in the council chambers, you're just shifting people over to one of those ways. But the noticing aspects remain largely the same. We'll have to kicker a little with the the language and just make sure, for example, that the members of the public know the council will be actually in attendance. But that's easy. You know, we really have the tools in place already, uh, that we just need to, uh, adjust slightly when we have the dates in mind and we can start just plugging slightly revised language into all the notices. Be really pretty seamless, not hard to do at all.
Thank you.
Yep.
I will sort of weigh in on this also because I chair these meetings. Um, I think that we should all be in the same format, whether we are all together on Zoom or all together in in a, in the same room. I think it's only fair that we, uh, that we all share the same screen and have the same visibility. So I would not favor option number two. Uh, I think we've been very successful in, uh, in, in our Zoom format in terms of trying to accommodate, uh, the the safety aspects and the public information aspects. Uh, and and I think we've done a good job with that. Um, I, I, I'm excited, I would be excited to get back together. I, the time will come when it's, when we will know that it's time to do that. And when we get in level, uh, in level green or better, uh, when the vaccine has been, uh, been readily available to all of our citizens, to all of us, and we've had an opportunity to, um, become vaccinated and we can, uh, sort of freely associate together, I think that's the, that's what I'm looking to do. So I, I agree with the thoughts that that most of you have. Do we have, um, additional comment? Uh, Ms. Hoppy?
I I don't have any additional comment. I was just going to try to move forward to consensus, but, so I don't want to cut anybody off if they have something. Okay. Um, I, it sounds like we have a majority of consensus, of a more than majority. Well, mostly majority, um, consensus. But to, um, stick with, um, one or three, but to be able to move into three, the parameters of moving into three would be that, um, state-elected officials are eligible for, um, the vaccine and, um, that we allow, uh, for 30 days and that we, as a community, are on green in the, in the dial. Um, now, how this consensus plays out, I think, is just with, um, Ms. Scheck. I see you're taking notes, um, letting us know this is the consensus you came up with, and this is the time. And then we probably will have to have another conversation about it. But I, at this point, I feel like this will give, um, Ms. Scheck the direction she needs to move forward. So I'll ask for that consensus for now. That's right.
Before we do, Mr. Goff.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay. Uh, let me go to Mr. Goff and then Mr. Uh, Urban.
I just want to clarify on the, on the 30 days. Um, you know, is that 30 days from the date vaccines are initially avail- available for elected officials? Or, um, you know, it's, we're not going to ask you all to sign a waiver that, or a form that you've got the vaccine and then you get 30, we have 30 days. So how how would you want that, that 30-day period to start? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that really what we should be looking at is that, in general, we want to be able to have time to be able to get the vaccine. So once it's available, then we have time to get it. However, if in the news it says, oh, there's a vaccine shortage, then it's not going to be, we're not raising our hand to commit that, oh, now we're, now we're not el- eligible for vaccines. And so, you know, but we're on day 29. So, you know, I I think that there needs to be flexibility in this, and it's, it's not something carved in stone, but these are the the general parameters of what we would like to see happen.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Uh, one question I had on this is, once we do go back in person, how is the attendance or the requested attendance virtually of a council member going to be handled? And can we come up with some parameters around when and if we would allow a council member to participate virtually, whether they're feeling ill or whether they're out of town or or whatever it may be? Or if they can't meet in person, are they being absent?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dahl?
Uh, in the past, when you think about it, you've already have a procedure and a process, which is that there have been council members that have attended by phone for various reasons. Council hasn't in the past established a, um, an eligibility to participate remotely. You know, you have to be sick or, um, there haven't been any entrance exams or requirements to be able to participate electronically under the open meetings law. Participation electronically is still participation in the meeting. That's why frankly, you're able to do the Zoom meetings that you're doing, you know, right now. So it it would be a matter probably of adding to council procedures, or at least even a temporary one, if you wanted to be more prescriptive about a council member's right to, to not be in the room in person. Right now, you don't, you, you don't really ask, uh, for a, the underlying motivation, or at least it's not required. Uh, so that would be new to require something.
Yeah, and I don't know that I'm necessarily looking to have someone explain why they're, they're choosing a particular format. I I just want to make sure that as we go to in person, should someone not be able to attend, that that doesn't put us back into, uh, doing it all virtually because one member's not able to attend in person. member's not able to attend in person.
Oh, I see.
Ms. Hoppe? I'm sorry, did you have more, Mr.?
No.
Okay.
I, I think Councilmember Urban has a good point. I, I don't think that the consensus that we have on the table is saying, because we all prefer to do all or one way or the other, that, that doesn't mean that somebody can't attend. We do have the new technology of being able to do Zoom, since we've done the council rules, and council rules, review of the council rules are coming up. And so that could be something that we could address during that review of council rules, and just something that even as simple as, you know, should a council member request to attend the meeting via phone or Zoom, that they are allowed to do that. And I think that's something we could, you know, add into our council rules that way, so that there's more direction, more specific direction around that.
Thank you. And that, that may be an issue that we want to give more thought to down, down the road, too, as we, you know, as we transition back into, into in-person meetings. Well, I heard, I heard Ms. Hoppe is, you know, sort of throw out the elements of, of a consensus. I don't really want to enumerate those unless we think we need to, but do we have general, general consensus on a direction? All right. Well, I, I see a lot of hands, so that's, that's sort of consensus. Thank you. And Mr. Goff, does that, and Ms. Scheck, does that give you kind of the direction that you're looking for? Is that specific enough?
I think it does. I think that's, that's very specific, and exactly what we're looking for. Ms. Scheck, that good?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you so much. Very productive.
Okay. Ms. Holte?
Thank you. This is just a, a comment at the end. I appreciate this conversation. I just really deeply want to recognize the efforts of staff over the last year to, as we have reinvented our form of government, the first couple of months, literally on a weekly basis, you have done an extraordinary job of not just accommodating us as a body, but our citizens and their need to participate in our government. I really don't know of another government that's, that's done this, and it's, it's not council, it's staff, and we're all better for it. And I think because of that, we're in a really great position to have this conversation. So I just want to take a minute to recognize, I think in particular, Ms. Scheck, Patrick, you've been fantastic. And I think, you know, it's, it's conversations like this, where I'm just incredibly proud to be part of this government and this city. And, and we just, we, we were nimble, and we stayed focused on what was important. And I can't, I don't know if there's another government I know of that's as accessible as Wheat Ridge. And, you know, I'm grateful we continue to do that. I can't wait to be back in the room with everybody. But meanwhile, we've done an incredible job. So just, I want to thank everyone. I'm really, really proud of, of how we've done this so far. It's been a long year, and I think we're better for it. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Holte. We, we're very proud of staff, and I know Ali is also in it. But, you know, you guys, you've stepped up also, and, and it's, it's just been amazing. It's been an amazing year. You guys have been very flexible, and, you know, I hope, I hope you all thought we got a lot done, because I, I think we have. You know, I know, I know you haven't, we haven't been able to proceed with, with some of the things that you may want it to, but I think we're, we're gonna get there, and, and it's, 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 it's been amazing. It's, it's got, it's, it's kind of got me re-inspired, I think. And I, I think it has for a lot of us. So it's, thank you. We appreciate those comments.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that, unless there's more to do on agenda, item number one, we will close that discussion. And we also have item number two, with staff reports. Any, any more staff report that you want to throw out there, Mr. Goff?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Very good. And we'll go to elected officials. Everyone had a round before at our regular meeting. Is there any, any redos that anyone wants to bring up? Okay. Ms. Hoppe?
I just wanted to say hello to little Mr. Dozeman. Hi, Oliver.
Joining our meeting. You made it just for the closing. So I believe we have no more business to come before our study session tonight. We will be back in the Zoom format at 6:30, one week from tonight, with, with some more study session items. So I hope everyone has a good week. We will, school is in session, I hope. I don't have little ones, but I see them out playing, and be careful as you drive, and, and take care of your neighbors as you are able. So, good night to all, and have a good week.